I call the meeting to order and ask you to stand for this predilegance.
.............................................
Good morning and welcome to the November thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen County Commission Meeting. I'd remind you to silence your cellphones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter in the white folder, and if you need a listening device, Craig is in the front and he could help you with that. Move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the commission meeting minutes from October thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of four million, six hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and sixty-two cents.
Pay the bills.
Second.
In a second, comments. Commissioner Barth?
Just would point out, this is for two weeks.
Good point, and there's also a lot of annual payments in this, so. I have a motion as second on the bill. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. Item A is the auditor's account of the treasurer's, of the county treasurer as of May two thousand and eighteen. Item B is the auditor's account of the treasurer, county treasurer as of June two thousand and eighteen. Item C is the Minnehaha County coroner's report for August of two thousand and eighteen. Item D is the Minnehaha County coroner's report for September of two thousand and eighteen, and those are all on file at the auditor's office. Item number five is personnel action. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item B is recognize significant employee anniversaries for November two thousand and eighteen. Carrie Deaver, good morning.
Good morning. I have a fairly lengthy list for you of anniversaries for November. We have Adams Scott as a deputy sheriff celebrating five years of service, Shelley Solvold with the museum celebrating ten years, and then the following people celebrating fifteen. Lindsay Butcher at the jail, Matt Oninson at the jail, Rebecca Martel, Seamus Walsh, and both at the jail, and then Amy West in our treasurer's office. We also have Russ Drexler from the highway celebrating twenty years of service, and Lisa Behrens at the JDC celebrating thirty-five.
Incredible. And I don't, we don't have anybody here today, do we?
I believe we do, yeah.
Okay. All right, and we'll move on to item C, record the volunteers in the county departments for October.
Another high month, two hundred and eighty-three people currently volunteering with Minnehaha County.
We like that they like us.
Yes, we do.
All right, with that, thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item number six, which is abatements recommended for approval. There are none. Item number seven is reports and requests. There are none, or excuse me, notices and requests. There are none. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. There are none. Next we have opportunity of public comment. If anyone would like to speak about anything that is not on today's agenda. Seeing no one move, we will move on to regular business. Item number ten is a brief presentation on InterLakes Community Action Partnership. Not here?
Commissioners, I think several of you have expressed that traffic's been a little bit tough this morning, and we anticipate that Cindy is coming down the hallway right now.
Okay.
So...
Clear the hallway.
Can we just do item number eleven, as she gives a second to take a breath?
Okay.
Okay, so we'll move on to item number eleven and come back to ten. Authorize the chairman to sign the two thousand and nineteen police service agreement between Minnehaha County and the cities of Baltic, Colton, Crooksdale Rapids, Garretson, Hartford, Humboldt, and Valley Springs. Joe, good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Lieutenant Joe Bosman with the sheriff's office. I have before you this morning a request to sign our portion of the two thousand and nineteen law enforcement services agreement for the eight contract communities that we serve. It's been going very well, so much in fact, that as you remember during the budget process, we've increased our contract hours with the city of Hartford. So that has opened new avenues for an additional personnel, things that show us hopefully that we're doing things right, we're building those relationships with those communities. We evaluate our contract hourly rate each year to make sure we're not falling behind in what our actual somewhat costs are to these towns. They're very receptive and open to those increase of costs as well. So this morning, I request that commission chairperson sign the two thousand and nineteen police service agreements for the towns that were listed.
Okay. Any questions for Joe?
Would move for approval.
Second. Motion a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Joe.
Go.
We will move on to, back to item number ten, and asks InterLakes Action Partnership to give a briefing. We only gave you a second to get a breath.
I apologize. Cindy Danabring, Executive Director, InterLakes Community Action. I apologize for being late.
It's fine.
Thank you for allowing us to come and talk about InterLakes Community Action today and give you an update from last year. Tammy Denning, our Minnehaha County Director and Heartland House Director, will talk specifically about the Heartland House program. But I'll just say a few words about overall what's happened with us, excuse me, in Minnehaha County. We had, I think I talked about our acquisition and rehab project of the Horizon Place Apartments on North Fourth Avenue last time. Now, that project has been completed. The sixty-two units are occupied by low-income families, and we are able to charge at or below fair market rent, so we're happy about that. The project turned out better than I had expected. It, as many of you know, when you do a rehab project, you never know what you're going to run into with older buildings. So they had budgeted for that contingency. Well, that contingency wasn't needed, so we were able to expand and do some other things, like we were able to add a sport court for the upper-age kids. They need something to do, and that gives them an activity where they can get some exercise also. What else do I want to say about Horizon? Lloyd Companies is managing that property for us. Boys and Girls Club are using our property at Horizon Place as, I'd say, a model, but right now it's a pilot. They did a pop-up club over the summer. On Wednesdays, they would come in and provide activities for all ages of children, and then the parents could come for dinner, so that it was a family deal also. Now they're doing after-school care for us, for our kids up there. So that's a good thing, too, and again, the parents can come in the evening. So it's a, the day is longer than a normal daycare would be, and it involves some not real parenting classes, so to speak, but some modeling goes on then in the evening with the parents and children. So that's kind of my piece, and I'll let Tammy talk, and then you can, we'll answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Good morning. As Cindy said, I am Tammy Denning from InterLakes Community Action Partnership. I am the Minnehaha County Director and Heartland House Director. We provided a handout here, as you can see on the screen. This is our October of two thousand and eighteen report. Just get some information about how many people were enrolled, kids, women, men, during the month of October. Some of the secondary education and employment information is listed, as well as a few of the places that our clients are employed at. But they're all over the city of Sioux Falls, so those aren't necessarily all of them. And then also at the bottom there, too, it states how many children were in registered daycares. Our InterLakes Community Action Early Head Start Program, Head Start Program through the city of Sioux Falls, as well as other registered, and then also in the school district, going to school, and then also some classes that they're attended, are required to attend, and then what the waiting list is like. I know that most of you or all of you have heard of and know about Heartland House. It is a rapid rehousing program, and what that really entails is our goal is to rapidly rehouse families that are homeless with children from zero to thirty days. They are coming from the shelters, they're coming from places not habitable, such as parks, cars, you know, campgrounds, things like that, and so we're taking them from where they're at and housing them as soon as we can into places around the community. When they first come into the program and are housed, they are required to participate in intensive case management with our housing stabilization coaches, and everything is really geared towards housing stabilization because we want them not to only obtain safe and affordable housing, but stay in that safe and affordable housing as a permanent thing for them and their children. As I had said, that they are required to complete some relationship classes, healthy relationship classes, because as we well know, excuse me, many of our families do not have healthy relationships, whether it be parents, whether it be boyfriend, girlfriend, spouses, whatever it may be. So that gives some information on boundaries and having healthy relationships. Tenant and landlord relationship classes. Many of our clients do not really have a good idea of how to be a good tenant, and so we are teaching them through Sioux Empire Housing Partnership. We have a partnership with them that they are teaching our classes for them, or for us, and then we also have a parenting education course that we refer out to also. While they're there, they do create a housing stabilization plan, which basically states its, their goals. It's very client-oriented, and the goals are all about how am I going to stay in this place, whether it be getting an apartment that is affordable for me, getting a job, you know, anything that evolves around the housing stabilization they are really working on. So the program is about twelve months. We can go either way, either increase the amount of months that they need to go to, or decrease it. Every family is very individualized, so every need is different for each family. The maximum time of the program is twenty-four months, so they cannot be in the program for twenty-four months. Right now, we are, have a waiting list of twelve families. We are working with the state and HUD through a, it's called a centralized intake system, and what that is, is anybody that is literally homeless is put into the system. They're given an assessment through a workflow, and they're placed and prioritized on the waiting list, depending on their, being chronically homeless, if they're a veteran, if they're a youth, or if they're a family, and also what they score on that assessment. The higher the score, the most needy and the most hardest to place. So we use those, that waiting list to go through when we do have an opening in Heartland House, so. I think that's about it. Did anybody have any questions? Any questions?
Commissioner Barth?
Well, thank you for being here, and being, working with your organization has been a pleasure for me over the years. And I'd point out, we've got Bonnie Duffy, Minnehaha County super citizen in the back row over there. She's also on the planning and zoning, for example. But I, you know, government cannot do everything, and they can't even do everything that they do do well, and so we really rely on non-governmental organizations like yours to do some of the things which are very, very complicated. You know, we can't kick you out of jail, but not everybody graduates from Heartland House. Some have to be sent away, and the work that we get from our non-governmental organizations is really vital to everything that makes our community successful, and I know that everyone here knows this already, but there are obviously people watching at home and learning for the first time about this, and so I really appreciate you guys being here.
Thank you, Commissioner Barth. We appreciate the commission's support of Heartland House also. Any additional comments or questions?
Thank you for coming, Cindy.
Thank you.
Yeah. Now that you've had a chance to catch your breath, you're fired.
One comment. That was a great point, Jeff, and I want to thank you and Bonnie for everything you as board members do for us also. When you mentioned that people could be watching this at home, if they know of homeless people, please direct them our way. Sometimes people just don't know, just don't know where to go, and that was a great thing to bring up, that if anyone knows of a family who is struggling and struggling to maintain housing, we have, we talked to you about Heartland House because you support Heartland House, and we very much appreciate that, but we have other homeless programs as well. So it doesn't always have to be literally homeless. If they know of someone that's doubling up and moving, a family that's moving from one household to another household, please direct them our way, because we have some things maybe we can do to help.
Cindy, and how would they find you if they're watching on TV and say, well, now I want to? Where would they, how would they find you?
Well, they can call Tammy at three-three-four-two-eight-oh-eight and ask for Tammy Denning.
Okay.
And then you can check out the website, yeah, and that way you'll be able to see what other programs that are available.
Is it heartlandhouse.com, or?
Yep. Our website is interlakescap.com.
Okay, interlakescap.com. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move back to item number twelve, which authorizes the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office to enter into an agreement with the Sioux Falls Regional Airport Authority to provide certified law enforcement officers in the airport terminal. Joe?
Hello again, commissioners. Joe with the sheriff's office. We have our annual renewal of our contract with the Sioux Falls Regional Airport to provide law enforcement services out there. We've been in this position for a little over a year. Relationship working with them has been really good. We've been having no problems finding staff to fill those part-time certified law enforcement positions out there, and we look forward to continuing this agreement with them into two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions for Joe? Look for a motion to approve. Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number thirteen is consider a motion to declare miscellaneous unused security equipment as surplus for donation to the South Dakota Division of Criminal Investigation. Joe?
What we have here, this is a request to surplus items that are on our capital asset list from ten years ago, when we received a surplus trailer from FEMA. We utilized and outfitted that trailer with certain security camera equipment that we've been using for large-scale events. Maybe you've seen it at the fairgrounds where our trailer with our logo on it, that we can use to help monitor and ensure public safety, traffic control, everything's being flowing seamlessly. The trailer has aged substantially, so much that we've actually decided to surplus it, and it was surplused in the city of Sioux Falls, surplus sale this fall, but we took all the equipment out first because that was a separate asset. Several of it is dated in age. Again, it's purchased ten years ago. We've identified as good stewards of our equipment, of how we could potentially use that other places, and we've teamed up with the South Dakota Division of Criminal Investigation with their newer style trailer, that they can utilize several of those pieces of equipment to help enhance that trailer, which is a joint asset that we have access to. We actually used it this year during the fair. It was a much more beneficial, nicer trailer for us to use out there. So at this time, we request to surplus the unused security equipment to South Dakota DCI for their purpose of a joint asset.
Okay, thanks, Joe, and I believe this has to be unanimous decision, since it is a surplus, giving it to another agency, and so we would have a roll call vote if there's no questions.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. And the motion is second. All those, oh, excuse me, roll call. Olivia?
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Yes.
Bar?
Aye.
Hi, Berger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Item number fourteen is authorize the chairman to sign an amendment for the two thousand and eighteen Joint Security Protection Agreement between the Department of Military and Minnehaha County to provide security services for the one hundred and fourteenth Fighter Wing of the South Dakota Air National Guard. Mr. Winnia, good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Keith Winnia from the sheriff's office. This amendment to the agreement is just to reflect the reduction in a hundred thousand dollars from the contract, initial contract amount. It's not as if we're losing a hundred, hundred K, it's just simply we didn't spend that money, so the government's getting that money back, and this is for the last government fiscal year, which runs from October to September.
Thank you, Keith. Any questions for Keith?
Move for approval.
Second.
And the motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We love having you come every year because you give money back. It doesn't happen very often. Item number fifteen is authorize the chairman to sign the two thousand and nineteen Joint Security Protection Agreement between the Department of Military and Minnehaha County to provide security services for the one hundred and fourteenth Fighter Wing of the South Dakota Air National Guard.
Yep. This is the same agreement, just for this year. So last month, carrying over to September nineteen, looks like the amount on this one is nine hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and one cent, and our projections for cost for this next fiscal year is a little bit less than that, so we should be fully funded again. So we had a good year last year, and we hope to have another good year. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number sixteen is consider a motion to declare the two thousand and nine Ford F-350 truck as surplus and authorize a transfer to the Minnehaha County Facilities Department with a reimbursement of seven thousand dollars to the Highway Department. DJ?
Good morning, commissioners. DJ Boothia, Highway Superintendent. We have our old shop truck. It's a two thousand and nine Ford F-350. It used to have a service body on it. We took the service body off of it, and have been working with Mark Kreins throughout last year's budget process for this year, and then throughout this year to make sure it's prepped and ready for him when he, and he needs it, looking to transfer it. Per the county vehicle maintenance, replacement, and transfer policy, it reads that vehicles purchased with restricted funds, like the Highway Fund, that are later transferred to departments funded by the General Fund, must reimburse the department providing the vehicle for the actual estimated current value. So we've estimated this value at seven thousand dollars, and looking for a motion today to transfer the vehicle asset to the Facilities Department and authorize a seven thousand dollar transfer.
Questions for DJ? Commissioner Karski?
The box, the body, or whatever, what, I mean, we're transferring it without that? Is that the case?
Correct. It's just the chassis of the, of the F-350 that we're transferring.
Okay.
He's planning and putting a flatbed on the back.
That's right. Yep. I think a flatbed, and he's going to outfit it so he can plow with it, too.
Move approval.
Second.
And the motion in a second. We need a roll call of vote again. Oh, excuse me, Commissioner Barth has a comment.
If at some future time this piece of equipment would be declared surplus and sold, would the money go to the General Fund or the Highway Fund?
The General Fund.
Just once he's...
Roll call vote.
Benega?
Yes.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Hi, Berger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, DJ. Item number seventeen is authorize the chairman to sign the two thousand and nineteen lease agreement between Sioux Valley Genealogical Society and the Minnehaha County Historical Society and Minnehaha County. Bill Hoskins, Bill.
Good morning, commissioners. Bill Hoskins, Director of Siouxland Heritage Museums. What I brought before you today are two annual leases. These are similar leases that we've had with the Sioux Valley Genealogical Society for space that they have on the second floor of the Old Courthouse Museum, and with the Minnehaha County Historical Society for space that they have on the first floor of the Old Courthouse Museum. These are small spaces. Both organizations' members come in and are involved in similar work complementary to the museum, and both these leases are currently for the free rental of space during the calendar year two thousand and nineteen, and as such would require a unanimous vote of the commission for approval.
Any questions for Bill?
Do we need two motions?
We will need two motions.
Make a motion for the Genealogical Society.
Second.
And the motion is second on the Genealogical Society. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously, and then a motion for the Historical Society.
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Excuse me, motion passes unanimously.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth?
You know, thank you all for last week being at the ribbon cutting at the new museum facility, the Irene Hall, whatever we call it after that part. Bill, do you have any other comments about that wonderful day and how things are going up there?
Sure. We had an unexpected snow, or un-hope-for snow, I guess it was. We actually had two hundred and thirty-nine people come anyway and toured the facility during the open house at the conclusion of the opening, ribbon cutting. The donors, Bob and Kari, seemed very happy with everything, and it was, turned out to be a really nice evening.
Other than a lot of people had accidents, not necessarily those two hundred and thirty-nine people, but it was a slick night.
It was a slick night.
It was a slick night, so. Thanks, Jeff, for bringing that up, and it's a beautiful building, so hopefully people have an opportunity to go out and look at it. Thank you, Bill. Item number eighteen is consider a motion to approve the two thousand and nineteen Minnehaha County liquor and wine license renewal applications. Olivia?
Yes, so this is the annual liquor and wine license renewals. Just for the record, I'll read off first the liquor license establishments and then the wine. So we have Baltic Corner, Garretson Area Golf Association, Garretson Sportsman's Club, GL Management, MJC Holdings, Monarch Steakhouse, Safari Bar and Grill, Sioux Empire Fair, R&amp;K Land Holdings, Triple J, Inc., and Bottoms Up. And then for wine, we have Crooks Conservation and Gun Club, MAS LLC, and Wild Water West. And then we have received no concerns or objections from state's attorney, sheriff's office, or planning and zoning.
And they, these businesses have until December of two thousand and eighteen to renew licenses, and so we do actually have another one for next week for sure, so there isn't a deadline as of today. Is there any questions for Olivia on this?
Madam Chair, I would just comment that we've many times had issues with our alcohol vendors failing the sting tests, and this year's been pretty good, and I really appreciate that.
You're working hard. Look for a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number nineteen is consider a resolution to address the attorney's fee on involuntary commitment petitions. Carol?
Good morning, commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. Yes, before you today is a resolution that we are asking you to adopt. You know, on occasion, you have people who come forward from you that are asking for removal of a lien specifically, I've met several times, but here, this is only specifically about drug and alcohol IVCs. We want to be consumer-friendly. We recognize the issues of drug and alcohol within families, and within that, we want to give people a process that's better than coming forward from you on drug and alcohol IVCs. The resolution before you today authorizes the auditor's office to go through and do that. So if somebody's closing on a house or something is an issue, they can go through and get that taken care of in a very short period of time.
Okay. Are there any questions for Carol? We will need a roll call on this motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion a second. Olivia?
Karski?
Yes.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hi, Berger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have the Minnehaha County Liaison Reports. Item number twenty. Are there any reports? Commissioner Barth, or Benega?
Just shortly, I attended the fair board meeting a week and a half ago. Very positive report. They're planning out already for the two thousand and nineteen events, and, excuse me, we'll summarize two thousand and eighteen in an annual report very shortly, but it was a wonderful report, and frankly, it was one of those that, it was very good news all the way around.
Good. Any other reports?
I would just say that about a week and a half ago, went to a state JDAI meeting with a state committee and just heard reports on how some of the other counties are doing with alternatives to detention for juveniles, and just a lot of really good things happening. We worked on, you know, what points do we need to look at to, to improve in certain areas. Some of the counties have had really good results with safely keeping their kids in other locations and decreasing their populations in their detention...
and decreasing their populations in their detention centers and not having any increase in crime. Some pretty creative ideas out there, which is really nice to see in a smaller area other than Minnehaha County, where we have a lot of resources, that some of these people are looking at different ways to work on that issue, so it was a good meeting.
If there are no more reports, we'll move on to new business. Is there any old business? Commissioner Barth?
Madam Chair, last week, when we canvassed the election results, the meeting was recorded audibly, but not on television, and I wanted to reiterate my comment that I had about the performance of our auditor's department during this recent election. And again, I was so happy that there were no issues that came forward, and I would commend Auditor Letts and his department for their efforts this past election.
Thank you, Commissioner Barth. If there's no other, Commissioner?
Just one other comment, and I don't know if it's new or old because of when the election happened, but there's a possibility of four recounts because of the closeness of the final votes, and obviously, the auditor and their staff will have to go through those starting tomorrow if the petitions are signed, and have to be completed by Friday, I believe, as far as the petition goes. But anyway, the extra work that this could bring, we'll just say at this point that we appreciate. What Jeff just said is that it is another step in the process, which we need to do, which is fine, but just let people know that there is some additional cost, which isn't the bottom line. The bottom line is, is it went very smoothly. So thank them for, not only their support, but also having to recount maybe four potential districts again.
And to recognize that that office is following the law.
Correct.
And making sure that things are legal, so.
All right, with that, I would look for a motion to recess the Minnehaha County Commission meeting.
Some of it.
Second.
A second to recess. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We are recessed until executive session.